Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. We are here to have a workshop prior to our formal meeting that starts at 7:00. Just to let everyone know, we are slightly modifying our agenda. The, after the conclusion of the business meeting, we will come back for a final closed session, and we will do that motion at the end of our closed, at the end of our formal meeting tonight. So just to let everybody know, we're going to start our workshop with the budget discussion. And Dr. Boone?
Good afternoon, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. When last we met, last week, we discussed the addition of five positions. And so I'm prepared to discuss ways in which we can do that. And I'll ask, if we can go to the next, you got it, Ms. -- okay.
Excuse me, Dr. Boone. Did we hand out copies of this or something? I see copies around and I don't have one.
Oh, this one?
This isn't that.
This isn't that?
This is another thing.
Okay.
Is this this one?
Is this it?
That's the one for all funds. That's the last.
From the last one? Okay. So this one, we don't have copy.
Oh.
Okay. Cool.
Okay.
It is posted, I just posted it minutes ago. It's hot off the press, but we can get your copies.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah, we'll get copies while we're sitting in here.
Okay.
Charged to find a way to fund five additional positions without eliminating the proposed hourly rate increase for part-time teachers. And this was to address four reading and math specialists, one ESL. I asked Ms. Ingram to kind of describe how we went into the budget to meet this goal.
Good afternoon. This slide basically is just sharing with you what is our total operating budget, which is $336,161,810. Just as a reminder, 85% of our total budget is people, salaries and benefits. 15% is for the district operation of non-personnel. Of that 15%, 7% of the budget is what we call nondiscretionary. And we title it nondiscretionary as those items that cannot change significantly in the short term, such as debt service, utilities, bus fuel, special education tuition, and building property insurance. So those things typically we can't reduce. So the other 8%, what we term as discretionary funds, which is $27 million. So the reductions to get to funding position, the following proposed budget amendments are coming from the remaining 8% of that $27 million of our budget discretionary items to fund three reading and math specialists and one ESL teacher. The proposal is to fund the fourth reading and math specialty position with a Title II positions from the elimination of one class size reduction teacher due to enrollment loss.
We are, we're going through that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Boone.
Okay, so these are the recommendation is to, what we could do in the operating budget is to fund three reading and math specialists, a total of $210,000, an ESL teacher, $65,000, for a total of $275,000 in the operating budget. If you go down to the note at the bottom, we're proposing the, our Title II budget has class size reduction teachers. And due to declining enrollment, we do not need one of those positions. So instead of that position, we are proposing to fund the fourth reading and math specialist position. So in order, in the operating budget to adjust to the $275,000, we had mentioned that we will adjust the amount for part-time bus assistance based on the additional 15 full-time position for a total of 30. If you recall, we have in our budget to eliminate some bus driving position, but we can also reduce the part-time hours in the bus attendance line because we are now converting to 15 full-time positions. So in the current budget, we have 15 full-time position. We're proposing adding an additional 15 full-time bus attendance positions. And then we still have money there to address having part-time to support those buses until we can phase it into, of having full-time on all of the bus runs. Those are special needs bus runs. You want me to finish?
Chief Limer, finish, yeah.
Because this is pretty much it.
Then we want, we are proposing to align part-time nurses to prior year actials. We had in the budget some funds to pay for part-time nursing position. And in looking at what we spent last year and what we are projecting to spend this year, the dollar amount that's budgeted in 2020 can be reduced. So here, in order to balance this budget, we're proposing to reduce $85,000, which will leave approximately $115,000 for part-time nurses. And also a proposal to eliminate the part-time grant writer position. And that will make our budget balance to the $275,000 needed to fund the four positions.
Five positions. And those just date, so if you can just keep it on that, on that previous slide. So again, want to be clear that this is no loss in terms of what we have in place. We went back and worked again as it relates to making sure we had made the appropriate just, that's you, Mr. Clanton. Okay, made the appropriate adjustment in the part-time bus assistance. So we, it seemed like that was getting a nod. See, we couldn't, we couldn't assume anything as certain line items, but it seemed like that had a nod, which allowed us then to go into the line item that we have for part-time and make that adjustment. Again, as Ms. Ingram indicated, the part-time nurses, we've looked over the last couple of years what our actual expenditures have been, and so we made adjustment there. Need to, again, just share with the board, before, I think the phase-in of nurses from the public health department began in FY '14 or '15. And so by FY '16, all of the nurses were then in MPS' payroll. The challenge in terms of making sure we were supporting our nurses appropriately is one, there was no supervisory piece there, and there were no materials supplies or equipment. And so over the last several years, we've been making those adjustments. And now that we have all of that in place, we also look at part-time nurses when we have vacancies or someone out on extended illness. We do have some substitute dollars there, but we, again, looked at the last two years of actials and made an adjustment there.
Okay, all right. Okay, Ms. Campson, then Ms. Basine.
What is Title II? What is that?
Title II is the teacher.
Teacher reduction.
Teacher principal, teacher principal professional development, TPT.
Oh, 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 okay.
And in that budget, it allows us, we currently support some reading and math specialists in that budget. And the budget also allows us to support some class size reduction positions, which we have attempted to do in certain schools over time. But as we looked at our enrollment shifts, we see an opportunity to transition one position from a class size reduction to this.
Very great.
And it's not Title I, so then it can be used anywhere.
Right, that was, yeah, I was wanting to make sure it didn't have that same kind of safeguard. Do we have any rollover funds this year? Are there usually rollover funds at the end of the year?
As a recommendation and a practice that we put in place, I am not using carryover funds for personnel because then that creates a structural imbalance in the budget. If that grant declines in the next year, then we have positions in there that we may not be able to afford. So the carryover funds for any of our grants, we use for almost one-time purchases, professional development, supplies, equipment, that type of thing, and not personnel. Where we do have our larger grants, we will sometimes, you know, when we don't have to, we don't have to spend it all down, we spend for allocated positions, the balance of that first, before we go into the new budget, so that we don't end up with that challenge. That was one of the things that we have, have had to deal with, is this constant rollover of staff into the next grant year. And then the district, as we've looked historically, got to a point that had a cash flow challenge issue because the number of positions was exceeding the grants as the grants began to decline. So I've taken, in terms of an administrative practice, that with the exception of our large grants like Title I and 6B for special education, where those may have some salaries, we spend those salaries first as we go into the next one, but we don't use the carryover for new positions.
Well, then would the one specialist that's being funded with Title II, would that job then come up in jeopardy next year?
It, all grant positions are in jeopardy annually, simply because we don't know if, what the federal government allocation will be for those. So that, that's, that's the one caveat. We, based on our projection for the next year, because this is a replacement of a position, it does not stand in jeopardy.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for working so creatively to make this happen. I appreciate it.
Okay, Ms. Basine.
So is there, is this a vacant position at this time, or?
No, 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 it's not a vacant position. However, we'll be able to handle that through attrition, through other vacancies. No, no one loses a job through this.
Okay, okay. And while I'm disappointed to have to drop the grant writer position, I do, you know, I think this is a good use of those funds for this purpose. But going into next year's budget, you know, I definitely want that position maintained as, or earmarked to ensure that that is something that we still work toward.
I agree with you. The reason it ended up at the table is the fact that it's been there for about three years as a part-time, and we've been unable to fill it, so.
Right, right.
Whenever anybody else finishes.
I can't find it in my notes, but I thought the conversion of the 15 was allowing us to accomplish something else the first time the budget was presented.
So initially, we eliminated 14 bus driver positions that allowed us to do a routing manager and a payroll clerk. And then also gave us some support through all of this to move these into, from part, 15 of the employees from part-time to full-time. So now that it seemed that the board was giving consensus and a nod that that was going to be an acceptable budget item, we could go back and then to our part-time line item and reduce the offset from where we had increased, we, where, from where we moved those 15 positions into full-time, they show up on a different line, so it allowed us to go back now and reduce the number, actual dollars in part-time.
Okay.
Ms. Clanton?
So at the last work session, I mentioned about CSEP. And I know that CSEP won't complete their budget, I guess, until May, right, May.
That's correct.
But I'm still noticing a 4% increase even though at the board meeting there was showing a, definitely a, there was a decrease of maybe about 30 seats, I guess, that were being unused in their average daily attendance, but I see a 4% increase here of almost $232,000. I'd much rather see a $50,000 decrease in CSEP and to maintain the grant writer position, considering that there was a decrease unless something else was showing that we're going to have more students in that position. But I mean, just over what we gave them last year, I just find that challenging.
The 30 pupil reduction is across all member districts, not just Norfolk.
No, it was on the Norfolk line that I referenced from.
Right, you referenced from it. But the total reduction in the CSEP budget was about overall numbers of students that they bill their budget on. We'll also share with the board that CSEP is, we're the fiscal agent for CSEP, and they use our salary scales and schedules to do this. So the 3.1% salary increase, that's the average for us, would also occur for their, their member district. That's primarily that. And again, when Mr. Sadler puts together his budget, we'll show what that reduction would look like across the eight member districts and what that impact will be. But their salaries are driven by Norfolk salaries.
Okay.
So we did a projection, because we don't have yet, based on students and everything else as to what that line item would be.
Okay, so we're the fiscal agent with this. So I guess they are our employees, I guess, in some respect?
No, technically, they're CSEP employees, but they, they work from our payroll system, our benefits, well, somewhat benefits also. The HR support, in terms of the salary schedule. So that's how, that's been longstanding. And so whatever our salary piece looks like is generally what they do. There have been times that they've asked the CSEP board to be able to do something different than what Norfolk was doing in terms of some retention or improving some places because their total number of staffing is a lot smaller than ours.
Okay. Any, any other board member questions on this portion of the budget? Okay, so Dr. Boone, is this your presentation of the budget for us at this point? Or is there another piece to it?
This is the presentation based on the consensus from last week that I was sent out to do five additional positions.
Okay.
Now, I did receive an email from you directing me or asking me to look at two additional positions, so I don't know how you want to handle that. But this was specifically what the board had asked me to do last week.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I think this shows good compromise on our part as the board and with what the budget restraints are with, with your recommendations, Dr. Boone. So I'm comfortable with this. I did bring up, again, my concern about our music and arts departments, the stress that's on the staff members that we have right now, asking to see if we could have one visual arts person added, one music added, to see if that could be infused in the budget. And I know that you had provided some feedback to say that, you know, you can do that with the current staffing. So since that's, since that's not presented here, can you explain how that would be done?
Well, a couple of things. We, again, not because that was directed from you. And you recall, I asked in that email, you know, is that what we're asking everybody? Because I left here from my notes and the board being to work on these five. And so we did some, some analysis of what it would take for us to accomplish those two positions. It causes us to go deeper into these discretionary funds. But certainly, you know, if it's the will of the board, we can share that.
So what, I mean, I guess my question is, is what, what are the thoughts that you had in order to accommodate the current workload without adding the positions?
That was two, three weeks ago.
We have a number of positions. So let me, let me step back. Some years ago, or may, may not have ever had them, I'm not sure, the art and music PE departments, art and music PE, they do not have teacher specialists like, and athletics, they don't have teacher specialists like English, math, science and history have teacher specialists. And so I think over, so there was a point in time when I was chief academic officer that we approved stipends for two people in each of the department for extra duties to try to support someone in that specialist role.
Okay.
Over time, it appears that there are a number of folks, and when, not just at elementary, but elementary through secondary, that have reduced case loads, class loads, in order to provide specialist-type support through art and music, particularly music. And so when I talked about the ways in which you could get it at, I'm looking at teachers who are not teaching a full complement of the day and doing support for the music office or the music department, verse, looking at ways in which we can align now those that have non-teaching, portions of their non-teaching day in such a way that we could bring more personnel into the classrooms. And so that, that was the way in which we've been working, we've been working through our various master schedules. Again, at, looking at the elementary assignment, looking at the middle and high school master schedules.
Well, I appreciate that, Dr. Boone. And I know that it's a daunting task to try to fit everything into the budget, but I feel very strongly about including these two positions in. And I would say that if, if the option is there to look further into the discretionary funds to allocate this position, these positions, I would definitely support that. We have a very robust delivery of our fine arts in Norfolk Public Schools, and I would hate for us to even think about the loss of any of our current instructors or the loss of instruction, delivery, and even for common planning time for teachers as they work to provide that. So that's my, that's my personal feeling. Again, I respect how hard you and the team work in order to really align the budget to what everyone's needs are, but that's something that I just certainly feel very strongly about. And I, I mean, if anybody else feels that way, then please, at this time, share your thoughts. But if not, then it will be something that is not included in the budget.
Dr. Gabriel, I know you got other folks around. On this particular topic here, and I know, Dr. Boone, you just mentioned about teacher specialist was the avenue that you were looking at. And I know that Dr. Gabriel had brought this up like two, three weeks ago. And I know that when it came back, it was saying that we would find opportunities that we didn't need to consider this for funding. So I'm looking at 183, and I see a teacher specialist in here, and I'm not quite sure. I guess is this under gifted and talented where our music department's located?
Let me check 183.
Page 183, yeah. And I'm thinking, so there's someone already, there's one FTE already in that position.
I believe that's supports. What's that?
Music is not there.
Music not in?
That's not music.
They're in classroom instruction? Okay, which number is that?
Oh, page number.
Classroom instruction is.
183, under gifted and talented?
No.
100? He was asking about that teacher specialist.
165. So.
Oh, oh.
And so they're just under what, teachers?
Yes.
Okay. So that doesn't really break that out there, but.
He just has.
Just.
165.
Okay, so that's in here, and I guess they're in, they're in that teacher specialist group? Was that what we're talking?
No, they are in the teachers contract.
In the teacher contract, well.
Contract, because our other teacher specialists that support the four core are in the Title II grant that we were talking about earlier. When I said we have some teacher specialists that are supported in that grant, that's where the four core content folks are, that are teacher specialists.
Okay, so for what you were going to do with music, it was coming out of what grouping?
They're getting a stipend.
No, no, no. They were just getting a stipend. I was, I was giving a historical perspective.
Just saying they're going to be full-time teachers potentially.
I was just giving a historical perspective and what we're able to glean from what the current staffing levels look like. There are a number of folks, elementary through high school, that do not teach a full load and serve in mentoring specialist-type responsibilities.
And this wouldn't interfere on their planning time?
No, every teacher's guaranteed their planning time.
Even the music teachers?
Music teachers are supposed to get planning time, yeah. Team is saying yes.
I mean, essentially, for me, product of the school district, definitely coming through our, our music, that exposure and those experiences for students are important. And I just know that there have been positions, even from my time on this board, that we voted on to put through, that I haven't necessarily supported because I don't feel as though it's allowing us the flexibility where we're sitting here now, having to make a decision about what's important about making sure that students, number one, have those experiences. So.
Well, let me be clear, Mr. Clanton.
I want to finish my thought.
Okay, because I have, I think I can solve this.
Just, you know, I, when I think about this, and just think about going back to, and this is my first process going through here, and I appreciate it, and I want to be clear about that. I appreciate the hard work because I understand, I've been here and know what it takes, and you all have to make decisions and sit around this table. But essentially, you know, grant writing position, you know, that's great because it generates other opportunities there. But when we get into the classroom and what Dr. Gabriel has mentioned about those two positions, just two can make a difference in some child's life. So I'm, I know we have a budget here, I know we have to do some certain things, but I'm not 100% on this budget. And I'm, and I know that you, you said there might be something that fixes there, but right now, I'm not convinced.
Well, so let me be clear to the full board. My reason for only presenting the initial five is that was the charge that I left here with. I was not comfortable in presenting the other two until there was a board discussion on it. I am prepared to talk about how we get there if there's consensus of the board for me to do so. But I was taken from what, because we reviewed last week to make sure that I understood the direction that the board wanted me to go in.
We did.
And that's exactly what I did. This was an email subsequent to that, and therefore, until the, you weighed in, Mr. Clanton, too, on that email, but.
I did.
And others, right, right, about not opining on the violation of open meetings.
I said options. I believe that we come in with options at the table.
Right, and so. And so my, my whole point is, we can, you know, if it's the will of the board, the consensus of the board, I'm prepared to discuss how we can get to the two. But I am still going to address the non-teaching functions of some of the folks. In addition to that, whether the two come on board or not, that's going to be addressed.
Okay.
Campson, then Ms. Smith.
You know, I, I think, oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead. Did you? I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry.
You know, I, I think that, that what, in hindsight, should have happened, I know that I gave the superintendent a list of what I felt we should have back in the fall. But I think that maybe what we should have done is the whole board should have, and I've mentioned it a couple of times, but I think, you'll recall, thank you. And I mentioned a couple of times, and I didn't seem board-wise to get anyone on board with me, which is why I did my own, but that this is a lesson for us to learn for next year, that, that in the fall, when the budget process starts, as a board, we look at what our priorities are. I mean, we pretty much, I mean, everyone knows my priorities, push it all into the classroom. But, and, and so then, when the superintendent starts, she has it. She received one from me, but I am just one member.
I did have one, too.
Ms. Basine gave me one.
Okay, and, and then she, she would know. I mean, I initially didn't get any of the things on the list, but now she's worked and she's given me some of the specialist ideas.
Well, no, I think we had some other things that were on your list. The teacher salary, you said at least 2% salary increase?
I did say the teacher salary. All right, I apologize. I did have a salary increase.
I can walk that page, man.
Well, I know you look at it because I, you went back and looked at it when I talked to you about the specialist.
We had our two by two, you went through that page.
Yes, I did. I carried around with me. But I think that that's something that, that we need to be more, more aware of next fall.
Yeah.
And in October, as I said, then the budget writing is starting. They're going to finish the proposed budget in January, February, and it's only fair to tell her. I support more, the music programs that we have in this district are wonderful for the children and also for the district's face of the world as we talk about and improving marketing and all. I mean, Danielle Robey, I've noticed since she was a first-year teacher at Tanner's Creek, when we opened Tanner's Creek, she was there. And, and the guidance and the direction she's taken the music department, and when she's begging us and saying, "I'm afraid I'm going to not be able to support all these programs without some more help," I can understand that. So I wish that, you know, you can't go back and change history, but I think that that would have helped the superintendent with all of us doing that. So for this, if we could find some way, I'm certainly supportive of looking for it because it is important. And I mean, the things I see when I go into schools with that, with the music, I'm amazed at what they do.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't want to lose that. That's, to me, the music department is, is one of the many glowing, shining things that we have in our school district, so, anyway.
Right, and I don't disagree with that, but I think everybody, when we ask everyone to weigh in and support how we do business, that it doesn't exclude the arts. And so that's why there are some things that are going to have to happen, whether two additional, art and a music and a visual arts teacher. and a music and visual arts teacher comes on board.
Well, and, and I think this also.
And circumvent systems.
Right. Well, I think this takes me back to what I've been doing for the last five months, as I've voiced my concern about the addition of central office positions and salaries there. You know, because we have very limited budget money, and, you know, they, and I, everyone's aware that, my voting on how that's gone, because I was afraid we'd be in this position now, desperate for more people to be in the schoolhouse, and we can't afford it.
Well, and, and to your point, Ms. Campson, I remind the board of the asset mapping information that I sent. We still have a very robust set of additional system of support in our schools. We, we really do. You see that from that full asset map. So, even when we had to do some reductions, we went to the reductions for some of the support positions versus the classroom positions in order to deal with the structural imbalance we had in the budget. Positions that were funded one time, you know, when the teacher specialist restored, restored one-time funds, and figuring out how we go forward with that. It was not done arbitrarily, it was not done in a punitive manner, but we also did not take all of the system of support out, and we still have the safety nets and those other things that are in place in addition, in addition to that. That's why even when we reduced part-time positions in one of the earlier budgets since I've been here, we did not reduce part-time teaching positions. We reduced other part-time positions across the district in order to balance that.
Well, for the future, though, I hope that we'll keep an eye on the balance between more, more, more support. This is an urban district, and we need a lot more support. All of our children can learn, but they have challenges, and we have to meet those challenges, and boots on the ground, to me, is how you meet challenges. So. I'll stop talking, because I think Ms. Basine had a question.
Yeah, I'll, I'll defer to Ms. Smith and Mr. Jordan, because I think they haven't had a chance to respond yet.
I was just going to say, Dr. Boone has shared with us that these two positions can be absorbed within the current budget. I don't think we should delay making a decision for these two positions, allow them to be absorbed into this. As Ms. Campson said, make our priorities known for the upcoming fiscal year known, and have them taken into consideration then. We don't have to cram everything into this one budget session or decision.
Well, the, the two positions aren't getting absorbed, they're not happening. So, they're, they're not, there's not additional two positions here, it's just using the current staff that we have. So.
So that they, using some of the staff that are not working, or not instructing.
Absorbed.
Full load.
I would just think of it, I think of the word absorb differently than, than how you said, but that's fine, I think we all understand. Okay, Mr. Jordan?
So, I agree with Ms. Campson in terms of the priority process, and I think that's important. I agree with Ms. Smith in terms of the structure. But I'm also still in support of flexibility to allow for the, the music and the arts. And so when we were at Norview, and I had thrown out the idea of the pool, so I'm assuming that what we have here in terms of reading and math specialists is part of taking positions that we have as half positions at a few schools for reading and math specialists and storing them to a whole. I still would offer that that's not really an equity model, and it's not really putting additional FTEs where they're needed. But I would think, based upon the, the arts and the music, that to me, that also has academic impact. And for those that are going to the NSBA conference this year, you will see that each year there's presentations that are awarded to districts in their work with the music and arts and the impact on academics. I would still say that a way that we can provide flexibility, which we often talk about at the state level, and perhaps address some additional support for arts and music, and stay within the framework that we have, that if we didn't tie the positions necessarily to reading and math specialists at, trying to have one at each elementary school, that if we still did the pool, and the board funded three positions, and allow for additional consideration as to whether that provides an additional half, where we have a halftime music person, or whether it provides additional half, where we may have a halftime math or reading person, is a way I still believe that can accomplish the goal of the whole. I'm not comfortable right now, at this late date, trying to, for us to sit here and try to figure out the additional two. But I do think that the, the pool concept could, could do that, if that was something that the administration thought made sense and the board thought made sense. So.
Okay, I'm going to go to Ms. Basine, because she, Ms. Basine, then Ms. Campson, then, yeah.
Yeah, and that was the point I was going to raise, that if that is something we want to do, and I completely value and think that the, the arts are extremely important, not in terms of academics, but whole child, social and emotional impact that that has, I think is incredibly important in our district, and supported in research as well. So, getting back to the pool idea, that is something that I can support at this late date, if that's something that we're willing to consider, and leaving it to the principals to decide, you know, how to use that pool, is something to consider. And then the other piece is that, going forward, also with the reading and math specialists, one of the things that I want to see, you know, moving forward, is their direct impact. And I want to be sure that, you know, not only from an equity standpoint, that, that we are seeing, that that strategy is having the impact that we want before we start adding, you know, additional specialists beyond what we do this year, and looking at our other interventions to see what is having the greatest impact, so that we can budget appropriately toward those strategies. So, having said that, you know, I do support the pool. I'm not as comfortable with, you know, maintaining what we've already talked about, and then looking deeper into our budget for two additional positions. But certainly, you know, I support strengthening our music and arts programs. But, you know, again, you know, I also agree, budget discussion earlier in the year is something that we need to.
We can accomplish two additional positions, one math, one art.
You mean music?
What did I say?
That's okay.
One art, one, one visual arts, one music. But, as I said again, we can show you how we can do this.
Could we perhaps see that?
But, before I pull it out. However, we get there, because one of the issues, we, we have some schools that the way in which the music position is assigned to them, they may have two or three different people serving them. Those are decisions that we're making. That's the stuff that has, we have to clean up. But there are ways in which we can found a few more dollars. But let me be clear, this is it. Unless the board is ready to go into riffs in other places. This is where we are in, in these discretionary funds. And the schools that tend to have these multiple music teachers are our Title I schools, some of our most challenged schools. And so if bringing one music position on allows us to correct that, then that will be good. But I'm, I'm still going into, through these master schedules that I have right here, where there are a number of folks, and I understand, everybody needs support. But when we, when we say that we're short of positions, when we are not maximizing the positions that we currently have, then that's problematic for me as superintendent to make that level of recommendation to the board. So that's what I say, whether or not we add those positions, we're still going in and putting folks to teaching that have more release time to support music teachers than, than they do.
Ms. Tao, Ms. Amber.
Ms. Martin, I knew that you had a question.
Yeah, I just, I really do want to see what, what you have to propose in order to have an art and math.
Or art, music, I'm catching it. Okay.
Art, music. Person, and I will be very happy with that.
So what you've just received is information on identifying an additional $130,000 in the budget, in order to fund those two additional positions. Both the music office and the art office, their part-time and non-personnel budget would be aligned with FY 2018 actuals. Okay?
I'm not clear what that means.
In other words, there was a slight dollar increase in terms of additional monies for, for things other than salaries. And so we, just as we did with nurses.
Oh, okay.
Just as we did with others, we're going back to look at what actual expenditures were versus.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Budgeted. We will go in and reduce funding that we had, that we had earmarked for Focus School, which is our, our partner in, in how we're doing our redesign. We will realign how we serve the schools that are being served under that. And then we had, we, student support services, again, there was a few more dollars we could garner, about $15,000 from the amount that we had, we had $85,000 on this screen to part-time actuals. We can take another $15,000 as, and then also look at the travel, reducing the travel line, and that's how we can get to $130,000.
I'm not in favor of reducing focus schools funding.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of reducing focus schools.
Well, so, so, so let me explain the focus schools. It's, it's. The, the design of having focus schools as, as a thought partner in our redesign work is the, the goal of being able to, for, help us build our capacity and less of them in the district. So, that has always been the plan. It has not been the plan with the previous turnaround partners, that because they were being paid.
Yeah, thank goodness, great work there.
We aren't paying focus school anywhere near what those schools were getting annually. Each one of those companies were getting annuals. And so what Ms. Chavis and team and I have looked at is how we will provide the focus school support in a way that allows us to free up, this is not all of it. This is not all. We, we have this, oh, no, they would say eliminate, no, they say reduce. But, but we.
Not the children, that's the company's name. That's the company.
That's the company's name.
The company's name, actually, is Focus Schools, we put it, we should have put ED on it. But that's the, that's the school, it's a, no, I can't even remember the name.
It's called Focus Schools.
Yeah, ED, right?
It is.
No. Yeah, ED. But we, we have a way that we can support what would have happened with this $25,000 in a different way. So we aren't losing support to our schools, and that direct coaching support for, for our principals, some of our principals, that is not going to go away. We're just going to restructure how we do it.
And will that put stress on another individual in the schoolhouse?
No. No. That's not a position connected.
I mean, the, you know, the, the coaching and the duties.
No. The coaching model that we are putting in place for next year is, again, we have been done, we will continue with the level of whole district support. Then we will reduce, come on, Ms. Chavis, we will reduce the, some things that have been done monthly will be done quarterly. That was going to happen anyway.
Okay, okay.
That was part of our transitioning and strength, where we now have the capacity as a district to do certain things.
So, as Dr., good afternoon. As Dr. Boone mentioned earlier, the goal is, is that the work with Focus School will be such that, over time, we're showing that we can sustain the work that's happening in the schools, by way of what's happening in the classroom with teachers around instruction. One thing that they've been doing with us is, matter of fact, this week, they're here now, and we're conducting in-building classroom focus walks, where all of our schools are visiting each other this week as a way of coaching and seeing best practice across school. So that's one way that their work is happening. We meet right now, they come every other month for professional development with our principals. So next year, what we're planning to do is make the work more personalized, such that it's in lieu of our instructional leadership teams at each school coming out monthly for their professional development, their planning, their work. We'll be pushing in more with Focus Schools actually going into the schools next year to say, "Here's what we've been working on for the last two to three years, let's see how it's happening, give you that support in your building, similar to what we started this school year and what's currently happening." It's perfect this week. So if you want to see that, they'll be in schools tomorrow, tomorrow morning, visiting as they have these, these last two days. So the work will become more differentiated and more personalized next week, next year. Let's pull out.
Okay.
New York, okay.
So these budget adjustments we have here, otherwise would have been used how, is one question. Number two, I'm, I don't like rewarding the process this way, because I think there are additional areas where, you know, we could give attention, whether it's in the classroom or support in the research and accountability department and so forth. But otherwise, these funds would have been used how, because I, I see the alignment, but I'm not real clear on the, the impact. And if there is no impact, then, you know, it, it causes me to think that maybe there are many areas we need to go and give some additional scrubbing. I would have preferred we didn't drop this in here at this time, but if we're going to do it, then I'd like to get a better sense of what it means that $65,000 in the music office and $10,000 or $9,000 in our office, what that really means.
As part of our budget process, every school and every department has an opportunity to share its thoughts and relate it to its goals and what we're trying to accomplish as a district. The budget, the district leadership team, which is the core budget team, goes through several iterations in a very specific exercise, that if we have X number of dollars that now could be included in the budget, outside of some of those areas that we've already talked about, which one of the priorities then make it to the table? And so there were certain, so when we say looking at actuals, we were honoring some requests. So it's not a matter of anything having been lost, but this would have addressed some requests going forward. We had some dollars in both of these line items, just as we did for, as I explained, for the part-time nurses. And when we started looking at what our actual expenditures have been over the last couple of years, we were able to go back and say, "Well, maybe we can go forward, because it doesn't strip everything." There's still money there to, to, to do the work that needs to be done, but we are aligned into what we've actually been spending over the last couple of years. And so that's when we went back to look at what had been certain requests, and what have the expenditures looked like for part-time and other support work. We talked about the focus school work, and then, again, the student support services line item with the part-time nurses, again, we looked at what our actuals are, and we saw that while we are increasing it about $100,000, the recommendation had been to increase it more than that. and we saw that while we are increasing it about 100,000, the recommendation had been to increase it more than that. And so now we're able to bring those back when we looked at, we are now two, three-fourths through the school year, through the fiscal year. And we've, and looking at our last couple of years and having a better fill rate of our nurses, that we could make that adjustment. So that's, that's how we got it.
So just as a follow-on, so I, you know, I respect what you all do. I don't know what an example of a request is. I would just say if the, if as a board, if we end up doing this, then I hope we will find ways to function as a whole, board, moving forward as we look at these types of issues and don't let this become a MO moving forward. That we, if we treat this as an exception and we do the things that Ms. Campson talked about earlier, because I can tell you that, you know, it still is bothering to me around the, what I still perceive as a reduction opportunity for pre-K students. And so, you know, I could have thrown that out, but I felt like we had worked towards some compromise and now we're supporting things that are all good. But I support having teachers in the classroom, I support music and arts, but also support more young children getting the opportunity to receive the early education that we know is at the core of all of this before you can get to this point. So I'll just leave it at that and see where it goes from there.
We also have, just as we did the asset map for the support in the schools around Title I, operating teacher specialists and all that, we also have the asset map as it relates to our resource staff.
Oh, that's awesome.
At the, it's only at the elementary level at this one.
Okay.
That's second force on board.
No, yeah, this is, this went along with the.
All right, just for the sake of time, it's 5:15, so I want to make sure everybody gets their thoughts in. So, Ms. Campson.
I'm going to defer because Mrs. Anderson has a chance to talk as much as me.
Ms. Smith?
Okay.
Dr. Boone, thank you for the effort that was put into this. I simply want to reiterate something that Rodney has already said. I just do not agree with the process that we're taking with this. And in doing so, they can very well set a bad precedence going forward because this is just not the way to handle budgeting. You may have won the war but lost the victory in this. And that's all I have to say to it.
I agree that, and I think we've all learned that we need to always start this discussion in October with, and have the board have a discussion on where our priorities are and list those priorities in the order they need to be in. And that would be a solution to being at the last minute. But I certainly appreciate Dr. Boone and her staff, the miracle workers over here at the end of the table, with coming up with a solution that now has put seven more people into our schools. And that was, you know, an important goal. Certainly what Mr. Jordan has mentioned is also important. And now, next year, we will be able to flashback on this and see, but the movement of more into the schools is certainly what we all want to do, to give support to our children.
Yeah, certainly many lessons learned here. And how, how good is this discussion going to be when we go into it next year? I think it's going to be very good. And there was a lot of compromise, you know, as we talked about early on, about what we, what we wanted, what Dr. Boone had recommended. So I, I want to be clear, is there support right now, and we can just go through each other, for adding the two positions with the budget items that Dr. Boone has presented so that we have a total of seven?
Question.
Yes, okay.
So in the asset map, so under the K-8 schools, we know that we're going to be doing the 3-8 school at Lake Taylor Middle. So we have the, whatever the allocation is for Poplar Halls and Fair Lawn. Can you just describe, since we will have in the new year a 3-8 school at Lake Taylor, how that fits into this mapping that I'm, that we're seeing right now?
You don't see it reflected here because Lake Taylor Middle is not here. We put anything that was identified as elementary. And our K-8s, 3-8s are considered elementary at the state level. And so as we are now working through the staffing for the 3-8 and the K-2, this is when we will begin to see how we utilize these support systems and we will look at what's in place at Lake Taylor Middle. And these are always supported based on enrollment. So the enrollment piece, the licensure of the folks, all of that will factor in.
And then the only other thing I just wanted to point out, just looking at this chart. So as we were talking about the equity issue with the reading and math specialists, so when you go to the far right column and you look at the gifted, and I know it's based upon enrollment and so forth, but what you can, just in quick glance, so the schools that have the 1.00 gifted are some of the same schools that we're talking about, I imagine, providing the reading and math specialists. And then some of our schools that have the greatest gaps, I'll just say for right now, and some others. I just think, once we, if we do this, we've got a lot of work to do and I think we've got to do it much earlier. But, you know, I have some concerns about that, so I just.
And let me, for the full board, those who probably weren't here during, on the board during that time, a commitment, a promise was made to the, to a prior school board, prior administration, that we want to get more gifted positions through a grant that wouldn't allow that.
Yes.
And so the promise was put out there to the community that they could be funded, only to, I guess, when they researched it and found out that that grant couldn't support that, that's how the gifted never got back to the table. As we said, when we look at the recommendations from the review of our gifted programs later this spring, then we will be able to see what those recommendations are. I do know there was a point in time where we had many more gifted teachers than this. And it was tied directly to our identification model. And because we had, and the goal of the identification model was particularly to support underrepresented schools and students in that process, that's when Norfolk went to administering the COGAT screener at first grade because we moved it back. And then the idea was to identify more gifted, Ms. Campson is fully aware of that, Ms. Chavis was here at the time also, and how, how we were doing that. I don't know what happened to, how the numbers of gifted teachers reduced over time. But we also know that the delivery model was also dismantled during that time. And so, but now we have a review coming forward that's going to help drive, drive this future.
Yeah, and, okay, Mr. Clinton, and then.
Jan, I know that we're at time, but I just want to point out, particularly with the reading and math specialist, that this board hasn't had a full discussion about even where those positions are going. Now, I know I've read some stuff about it, but we haven't as a board had any discussion about it. The only discussion we've had is that there is an equity task force that has it in place, and that was policy-driven. So what I do take away from that, that I do want to place here, is that we do talk about it. I am in favor of making sure, and I think I've mentioned it before, that it goes to the greatest need first. That we identify where those schools are in the greatest need and that's where those positions go. And it's not about every school having it, it's about where it is to get us where we need to go. Now, we get in there, and I also agree with Ms. Campson that she's made mention that just because a school has reached a certain goal, doesn't mean that you can't, that you just abandon it with its supports to make sure that it stays there. But we have to make some hard decisions in regards to the resources that we have. And I'm in favor where the greatest need, that's where they go first. But I just want to point out that we haven't had a discussion, we haven't talked about no schools, we haven't talked about anything like that as a board as a whole.
And as a superintendent, I have not made any recommendations.
Exactly, so.
So if y'all tell me these are not assigned based upon.
I have not.
I don't, we haven't had a discussion about that at all.
We did have discussions, but if it's flexible.
We had, so, so as superintendent, let me say how I intend to approach this.
Thank you, that will help me.
Because this is my day-to-day operational piece.
Yes, it is.
We're going to look at the data around which schools have what need that may not have a full-time position.
Yeah.
And what's the greatest gap, either through subgroups or overall student performance.
Yeah, those gap groups.
I'm on board.
Okay. Okay, we need, yep, Ms. Martin, then we are going to wrap up our conversation. Poplar Halls is closing.
Yes.
Is the principal a principal or an assistant principal?
As I've told the board, I'll be coming back to you all shortly about staffing. When we get at administrative, it's one-to-one and it becomes personally identifiable. So I won't have that discussion in an open session around that. We're working through that. But it's currently staffed with a principal. Fair Lawn has a principal and an assistant principal, Poplar Halls has a principal.
Okay, but the, the number of principals from this school year to next school year has not changed, even though Poplar Halls is leaving.
And remember, at the time that we put this out to the board on February 27th, all votes hadn't been taken as to our direction, we have to assume. But we, but we did talk to you about some adjustments we made anticipating that the board was going favorable for the 3-8 and the K-2 and the moving out of Poplar Halls. We talked about, we can move a custodian, we can absorb that, but I'm just not at the other pieces yet. But we'll be bringing it to them. The savings, any savings that come from that won't be in personnel because, again, as we put people other places, it won't be in personnel, it'll be in operating costs, utilities, and that type of thing. If we had gone to a K-8, we might have had greater personnel savings.
Dr. Gabriel, so as we move forward with these things, I'd just like to ask the board to really pay attention to these things in the following report. Even when you look at, you know, who gets 180 minutes and who doesn't, it's very interesting.
Yeah, okay, so is there, is there a majority consensus to include a total of seven positions on the budget that is presented this evening that we'll be taking action on? Ms. Basing?
I can support that, and I don't know if this is something that we can stipulate, but I do want those positions to, to go toward the schools with the greatest needs, with the greatest gaps. And I don't, you know, it's one thing to say, you know, we're passing a budget, but it's another thing to say, give direction as to where we want them to go. And I would like to see in the motion that, that for these seven positions, especially the reading and math specialists.
Well, I think maybe a different way of saying it, correct me if I'm wrong, but it needs to align with our board directive to achieve our priority.
That is, yeah, it is tied to our accountability, yeah.
To achieve the priority of our goals to be fully accredited by 2022. So whatever, if it's, you know, it sounds like it should be based on need, but it's what, so whatever it is to align to that.
And I think we've already given the superintendent that direction. That's what she's already told us she's going to do.
Well, I think the superintendent agreed with that direction.
That's what I'm saying.
Believe me, I do think outside of the board's meeting, board meetings. But no, but I do intend, as I was saying, I do intend to look at the data. And we're going to look across with the, with the curriculum administration, chief academic officer, executive directors, and, and we will inform the board as to where those positions will be placed.
So, Chairman Chair, I would support a separate motion and supporting that directive because I think it's important for us to be able to agree that based on the data and having Dr. Boone to come back and report to us as to where those positions are going outside of the budget. So I would, I would support a motion coming from you that would state that today.
If that's something that you think is appropriate.
Well, I would say we didn't have a motion last week when you, the consensus on the five positions, and I brought it forward. I hear the consensus, I've committed to the consensus, I think I'm good with that. What I wanted to say going forward is that the budget, the action for the budget decision point in the business meeting, you will see where we posted the, all of the accounts, the operating budget total, because these movements did not change our bottom line. So I was, we were able to post that this afternoon. This is about where the line items go. This, the line item cleanup will be in the final document that represents the school board's adopted budget that goes to the city by April 1st, on April 1st. And so these line item adjustments will be reflected in what goes over to the city and in the school board's adopted budget. So when we get to the point during the business meeting of approving the budget, you will see that we posted the dollar figure for each of the areas. It's, then it, then it becomes the school board's proposed budget, all funds. And so Ms. Ingram has put together what all the funds recognize. You remember last week, at the very end of the work session, we handed you four pages and it represented some additional, what the total of grants. And we indicated, again, these are projected amounts, any adjustments that need to come forward, absolutely, we come back to the board for those. But they, we're asking that the school board adopt the following budgets for fiscal year 1920 with the dollar amounts there for an overall total budget of $400 million. And so that is posted on board docs. And that's what we will be asking you to do since the actions of the seven positions did not change the bottom line.
Chairman Chair, for the sake of time, I'm comfortable, but during the business meeting, I'm going to have questions again about the operations portion of the budget that I brought up at the last meeting. Not necessarily trying to change any numbers, but I think it's important that we acknowledge in our proposal that we send to council that while we have balanced the budget with what we have, there still is a significant need on the maintenance and operations side as it relates to the operating budget. Because it's going to be great having additional classroom support. We want to make sure that they are in quality environments and working in work.
We did not put the 16 million in the budget.
No, I'm just saying, no, but it should be some type of note and acknowledgement that we did not do that. That does not mean that the need is not there.
Right, right. So I would just say that what we'll do for the formal portion is we'll make the motion on the budget, we'll have it seconded, and then we'll open it for discussion, and that's how we'll lead into it.
It may be in the letter that you, that you will write the company, the.
That's a, yes.
But I don't want that to get lost.
Okay, yeah. Okay. Yes, okay, go ahead. So, thank you, everyone, for all of the input that you have provided on the budget discussion. We have one more item here to discuss the educational planning and the Norview middle school feeder pattern. I'm going to let Dr. Boone share her thoughts on that.
As I stated to the board last week and made a request that we would defer action on the change in middle school pathway for Ingleside, Sherwood Forest, and Coleman Place as a result of the conversations with those who attended the community conversation and acknowledging that those families should have an opportunity for time. We would send this to you in an email, but we finalized the dates and times for those conversations with those school parents. Ingleside, excuse me, Ingleside Monday, March 25th at 5:00 p.m. We worked with the principals, so the times and things are what they have requested. Tuesday, March 26th at 6:00 p.m. is Sherwood Forest, and we will send this in email. And also Tuesday, March 26th at 7:00 p.m. It does not mean we're going to give, we're going to shorten the time at Sherwood. As conversations are still going, we will divide as an administrative team so that we can start at Coleman Place. But Coleman Place, uh, at 7:00 PM at Coleman Place.
Okay.
They already had a family night scheduled. And so that was scheduled from 5:30 to 7:00. We asked the principal then if we could piggyback, since her families were already there.
Okay. And then for a vote, Dr. Boone, can you tell us again what your request is?
And then I will be coming to the board on April 3rd, uh, which is normally our work session. We generally don't take action, but I would ask the board to include that as an action item for April 3rd work session. Uh, I will be bringing forth that recommendation to the board as to, um, how I would recommend the board proceed.
Thank you.
So that was my one and last statement.
All right. Uh, let's go ahead and have a motion to go into closed session. I make a motion to go into closed session. No, we're waiting for...
Oh, wait for the read, okay, I took the second. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I missed the second I was calling.
They waited for you to read the motion, Ms. Javies.
Motion to enter second executive session. Moved that the members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2 dash 3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for a, discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection 1 of the above cited code section. The subjects of this portion of the sessions are considered, are, are consideration of the personnel docket of this date. Discussion of the previously approved appointment of a specific employee and discussion of charges brought against two specific employees. The discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would have involved the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record pursuant to subsection 2 of the above cited code section. The subject, the subject of this portion of the session is consideration of the student support docket of this date. See consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members, consultants, or attorneys pertaining to actual or probable litigation or other specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 7 and 8 of the above cited code section. The subjects of this section of the, of this section of the motion refer to advice of counsel regarding legal issues related to the personnel and student support actions identified above and updating by counsel regarding the investigation of a hacking of a Twitter account and an update of a, update by counsel regarding Norfolk Education Foundation. For the vote, please, Ms. Basine?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Dr. Jordan?
But, uh...
Mr. Jordan.
I, uh, just wanted, you know, I, uh, in terms of the NEF matter, I just wanted to do my normal disclosure as far as that is concerned as possible. I may leave depending upon the, the conversation, so.
And, uh, so you vote, but, um, Dr. Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you very much.